We stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as the Honorable Pat Kennedy gives our invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. Prepare that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. For Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie, here. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. McCray.
Here. Form is present. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I entertain the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
To Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have citizen comments. Gabriel Reese. Please step to the mic.
Good evening. Gabriel Reese, 25388 Graham. I hope you're all doing well. Thank you for doing what you do. I wanted to make two comments on last week's meeting regarding the marijuana ordinance. You already, I know we're a broken record, you know where I'm at, so I'm not going to try to repeat what I've said before. Two comments. One, thank you for the cautious approach. I appreciate some of the retention of different zoning restrictions. My position, as you know, is that we take it step by step and maybe loosen it with time, but being very cautious. However, this is the second comment. I do think that 250-foot restriction in the industrial zone ends up reducing the benefit of allowing those businesses in the township without any real public good gain. And what I mean by that is, the industrial zone already is developed, there's already buildings, so if there were to be a fire, which is a legitimate concern, there's already infrastructure, it's going to spread, no matter what business is in that building, 250 feet between marijuana businesses, there's still a business between those two businesses. All it does is make it harder for businesses to actually find the spot that's right for them, invest in infrastructure, and actually maximize tax revenue for the township. So, again, you know my position, you know that I wish we weren't doing any of it, but if we're going to do anything, then I think the secondary goal is how do we protect the public interest of schools, parks, churches, those kinds of, what kind of community do we want questions? And then, the third question is, and how do we maximize the benefit to this community through tax revenue? So I just encourage you, I know it's back with the planning board or however that works, and so I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I would recommend, I think it's good, that's a good concern for Trustee King regarding that Shelby Township or wherever that incident occurred, but I do think the 250-foot setback in the industrial zone is not beneficial. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, just, I know we don't go back and forth, I just want to, just for the record, just want to state for the record, oh, I'm sorry, I just want to state for the record that the grow operations and the processing facilities, they don't participate in the Michigan, the revenue sharing portion of that, all we would get is a one-time license and annual fee from those facilities. Is that right, Mr. Chubb?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the public hearing on the tax levy. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing on the proposed tax levy to support the proposed fiscal year budget 2025.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bonner, you are on, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. Good evening, Honorable Board. Tonight, we are discussing the public hearing on the proposed tax levy to support the fiscal year 2025 budget. And before I begin on this, I just wanted to remind everyone that we do this now, even though you will not actually set the tax levy until the fall, because state statute requires that at the board meeting, when you adopt the General Appropriations Act, you also have to have a public hearing on the tax levy to support that budget. So that is why in our community, we have this public hearing in March, even though you won't be formally adopting the tax levy until September. I did pass out to all of you, and I left a few copies in the back of the room, eight slides that I'm going to discuss this evening. All of these slides were in the presentation that I gave at the special meeting in early February on the initial presentation of the budget. These slides are more specifically, though, about the tax levy, and so I felt they were relevant for tonight's hearing on the tax levy. The first thing that I want to share for the public is the fact that, looking back at our 10-year history of our property taxes and assessments, going back to 2015, the proposed tax millage rate for 2025 will be the lowest tax rate we have had in the last decade. We peaked in 2018 with a tax levy of 26.82 mils, and the proposed tax levy to support this year's budget is 24.22, which is a reduction of 2.6 mils over the course of the last six years. That is a 10% reduction in the tax millage rate over the last six years. And to highlight that even further, we are recommending for the second year in a row that we reduce the Public Safety Special Assessment District millage from 7.65 to 7.25 mils. That will bring the SAD to the lowest millage rate it has had since 2016. Each year, as part of this, I do talk about how our taxes and assessments compare back to our peak taxable value. So every year, we have the conversation about the fact that, due to Headley and Proposal A, even though the market value of someone's home may have increased significantly, and we know from the supervisor's state of the township last week that over the last two years, property values went up 26%, we are not able to have taxable values increase at the same rate. Taxable values are capped at either the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. For the second year in a row, we are actually going with the 5%. The inflation rate that the state of Michigan uses for this year was at 5.1, so the 5% is the number that prevails. Related to that, if we were able to still assess at the same taxable value that we had back in 2007, which was the year that we peaked, our tax levy would be almost 40% less than it is today. So, we are paying a significantly higher amount of tax rates this year because of the fact that, due to Proposal A and Headley, our taxable values are still not back to where they were in 2007, even though people are able to sell their homes for more than they did in 2007 at this point. That is also why, and I know that you all hear it, and I hear it as well, we have those situations where you can have two people who are living in identical homes, and one person, I'm just going to use for example, maybe Trustee Jackson has lived there for 20 years, and Trustee Kennedy bought her home and moved in this year, and Trustee Kennedy could be paying significantly higher taxes on the same home, and that's related to the uncapping that happens as related to Headley and Proposal A. And so what is happening is that that difference between market value and taxable value is continuing to widen over time, and that's what causes this disparity between the person who's been in the home for many years and the person who is new to that home. The only way that that is ever going to resolve itself is over the sheer course of time, due to a recession, which is not something we want, or if the state legislature takes action to find a way to fix this problem, the conflict between Proposal A and Headley. How reliant are we on the SAD? For fiscal year 2024, the year that we are finishing, we had 32% of our public safety operations were covered by the SAD. For the year that we're entering, I'm projecting that 31% of our public safety would be covered by the SAD. So we are becoming slightly less reliant. The big change that we see in the proposed budget this year is that we were able to move dispatch back into the general fund instead of being covered by the SAD. So that was a big shift for us, and I'm glad we were able to do that and still lower the millage rate in the proposed budget. The next slide is the first one that has the two pie charts that are kind of comparing our revenues in the general fund, and if you notice, I wrote the general fund and the SAD. And I'm saying that because, as part of the change to the uniform chart of accounts, moving forward, we are tracking the SAD in its own fund. It will no longer be part of the general fund. That was a conversation that the accounting department and I had, and that we proposed to all of you several months ago, that for transparency purposes, we thought it would be beneficial if the SAD was in its own fund, that way people can look exactly to that and go, that's how much money is in the SAD. But for comparison purposes, between '24 and '25, if I didn't put the two funds together here, the charts are going to look really wonky. And when we get to the budget passage later, that's why, for example, it looks like the property tax revenues went down by $7 million. They didn't go down by $7 million, it's just that that's the portion that's of the SAD, and that's now captured in the SAD fund, which is not the general fund, so it's just where it's being tracked. But overall, it didn't really change. Looking at this pie chart, you can see that our revenues remain more or less very, very consistent. The reason why we have the big reduction in federal revenues from this year to next year is because this year, we still had a significant portion related to ARPA in our budget, and at the moment, we don't have that in the budget for next year, as we have been expending those funds. The rest of the parts of the graph just kind of adjusted to make up for that difference, but there really was not any significant difference in those revenue streams. If you go to the next pie chart graph, that's the same thing, but looking at our general fund and SAD expenditures, and again, this is very consistent, with the exception, that I'm going to explain, of why did personnel change from 67% to 72%? And again, that is related to the ARPA funds, because we used ARPA funds to pay for public safety wages, so that we could then use that same money to pay for the recreation center, that was how we moved that through, so that changed the personnel proportions. If it wasn't for that, you would see that the two charts would be almost identical to each other. There was not any actual significant change. And so when you look at next year, when we look at the 2025 versus 2026, my prediction is that the two charts will look very similar to each other and not show that difference. All in all, as I said at the beginning, I think this board has done a very good job through trying times of trying to ensure that we are being good stewards of the public's money by being able to reduce our millage rates over time here while still being cognizant of the need to be putting money towards things like capital, towards competitive wages for our employees, and for ensuring that we are funding our long-term liabilities like pension and OPEB. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board? Hearing no questions, questions from the public. Any questions from the public? If you'd like to ask a question, please move to the mic.
I'm a sucker for it. Who knows what's wrong with me? Thank you. I guess, and this maybe this is outside of the scope of this discussion, I know we've talked about the basins that we have to install at $75 million, I know there's a low-interest loan, and then a grant to cover the interest, and different things like that. I guess that's a concern for me, is knowing that we're doing one, and then there's potentially two more down the road, which, oh, is it just one more? So total of two?
Yes.
The first is $75 million, correct?
Yes.
The second is probably 80, you know, with inflation by that point, whenever. Is that in, is there, I guess, is that already been worked into these budgets of how we're going to prepare for that, or is that sort of, we're looking to the future?
That doesn't really directly tie to the tax levy, but if the supervisor's okay with it, I don't mind answering the question.
You'll speak to this because it's a big deal.
Sure.
One minute.
So, related, related to that, the answer is yes and no. It is not so much in the budget documents that are before the board this evening, because everything before the board this evening is related to the general fund and the special revenue and enterprise funds. Where we will have a much more in-depth conversation on that topic specifically will be in June, when we review the water and sewer fund budget specifically, because that's where that will be paid for from. So, we will be looking at that in more detail in just a couple of months. Related to that, last year, the last two years in a row, we have been working at increasing the amount of capital set aside that is within the water and sewer fund already, so that when we do have to account for those payments coming, the debt payments coming on related to the $75 million, that the shock to the system will be less. So we have been working to account for that as we move forward, and we will continue to do so. It's going to be probably two, if not three, years before those debt payments actually begin, so we still have time to kind of ease our way into this, as best as we can when you're talking about a $75 million debt. Right.
Thank you. Ball please to us.
Yes. Thank you, Director Dennis.
Other questions about this from the public?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay. Please step to the mic.
Jack Keenan, 1-5, there's what Kenon. Okay, so we're talking about the L440. Taxes are based on a taxable value.
Jack, keep the mic down, posters of people who hear you at home, thank you.
Okay. We're talking about the L440. Taxable values are what taxpayers pay. That goes up, went up 5% based on the inflation rate. Any idea that you might want to reduce that to 3% or lower because of the problems with some of the low-income people who are in the township who may have lost their job or otherwise? First question. Second question is... Also, the other thing is, I see that you reduced the milit rate, which is probably a good thing, because that would then suggest that we'd have more residents in here who would be paying less, less money to purchase a property. Is that true? That's all I have.
So, related to the first question, we don't, we don't have the option to do that. The taxable value is set by the assessor's office and confirmed through the county level, and the L4029, which is what assesses the millages, is set against that rate. We don't have the ability to adjust what that rate is without adjusting the overarching millage. That said, there are programs that are in place that I'm sure if people were to speak to Treasurer Kavanaugh, there are hardship programs, and there are programs for people with lower income regarding payment plans and options and subsidies. There are programs that are out there related to that. For the second question, the answer to that would be, is really yes. I think we're seeing an increase in the percentage of our taxable, our tax revenue that's being collected on time, which is a good thing, safe from our taxpayers, and as the taxable value on their homes is going up, it's allowing us to distribute that more evenly across the field. So, over time, it will lessen the differences between those homes that are, that seem equal, the ones that were capped and uncapped.
Any other questions from the public?
David Reese, 26221 Elba. That's a simple one, I don't know what SAD stands for.
Special Assessment District. So, communities have the ability to assess a special assessment district for certain things, public safety is one of them, so it's not, it functions like a millage, but it's not technically a millage. It's a special assessment district.
Other questions from the public? Other questions from the board? Can you entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we close the public hearing on the proposed tax levy to support the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows. The minutes for the regular meeting of March 12th of 2024. The warrant list of bills as of March 26th and the total amount of $8,190,856.05. Secretary for Job Description Update.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move to new business number one. Mr. Washington.
Thank you for your time today. I'm here to present a job description or position description from, that was approved by the Civil Service Commission. The first one, I have a total of three today. First one is the marketing and administrative assistant position, you know, which will be an exempt position, and it'll be at a grade three. That position was reviewed and approved by the Civil Service Commission last month, and I'm bringing it to you this evening for your review and concordance.
Questions from the board? Hearing no questions, both the pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the marketing and administrative assistant position.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. Any other discussion? Several call on us, please.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. Washington, continue.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. Next would be the senior accountant position that the commission reviewed and approved. However, I would like to bring to the board's attention that if you look down in examples and duties or responsibilities lines nine and 10 will be deleted because they're unnecessary for this job description. This is another exempt position, and it would also be at a grade three. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions from the board on this position? Questions from the board? Hearing none, with the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the new position of senior accountant.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray? Yes. Motion passes. Come on, Mr. Washington.
Okay, and my final, final job description this evening will be for the benefits coordinator position, which is going to be an exempt position, and this is going to be at a grade And it was reviewed, the qualifications, the job description, and essential functions were reviewed by the commission at their last meeting and approved. And I bring this before you tonight for your review and concordance.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I noticed that there's no typing qualification for this one. Is that correct?
Yeah. This is basically someone who's sort of like an account clerk, just sort of a little bit more glorified. They would be working mainly with, you know, Blue Cross, Blue Shield bills, you know, dental bills, things of that nature. It won't be a lot of production. It won't be higher than any production typing in this position.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, with the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval of the benefits coordinator position.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray? Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time, Honorable Board.
Excuse me. Good evening, Honorable Board. So, I am here tonight seeking your approval for a contract with McQueen Equipment. This is for SCBA equipment for us. We were awarded a FEMA grant. We were awarded a FEMA grant through Western Lane. There's approximately six different departments that all went in on this grant, and one of us had to be the sole leader of the grant. We took that on us. I'd like to thank Jason Kickbusch for authoring that grant along with a gentleman from Westland. So the contract here is for $1,527,428. Now, 90% of this is going to be refunded back to us through FEMA, and then all six of the departments will share the rest of that portion of it, ours being just under about 20 grand total. So we're getting a lot of equipment at a very reduced cost, and this is the great work of doing the grants through FEMA. So I'm looking for your approval to accept this proposal.
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
How long does it take to get reimbursement?
Once we get paid, once we pay the bill, we submit it to FEMA, and it really all depends on how quickly they want to move along. We've gotten pretty good results with the last ones we've done, but everyone's different. This is probably the largest by far that we've done, so I would assume that they'll follow the same pattern, but I can't be for sure.
What is, what is, what is seen?
The last ones were like two months, weren't they?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I was thinking years.
No, definitely not years. And the way I have it set up is the six other departments, because all the equipment will be shipped to us, we'll have it here, and none of the equipment will leave my building until I have a check from each fire department for their equipment, because once the equipment leaves, trying to get a check back is always a challenge. So they won't leave until they have a check, till I have a check.
Okay, that's good to know, too.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Is this an equal share for each of the six departments?
No, everybody was a little different depending on size and depending on the equipment that you ordered. So some of the larger departments will pay a larger share because they had more equipment that they had on it.
You mean get a large share?
Well, they'll get, they ordered more equipment based on their personnel for their department. So whatever we wanted to put in for, for each department, we all got what we wanted pretty much. There's a few things that they cut out of the grant, but for the most part, everything that we rolled for, we got.
Okay, thank you.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
So just for simplification, for clarification?
Yes.
That whole list of items, like 150, this 150, that, that's not all for us. We're, that's for all six departments.
Correct.
But we're paying, footing the bill, the whole 1.5 million?
Correct.
And we'll be getting reimbursed from the departments first?
Yes, because we'll get their money first when the equipment comes in. We'll have already paid the bill to McQueen. Obviously, depending on how quickly the FEMA, the federal government gets our money to us, the equipment should be here by mid-April, and so they'll have their equipment, we'll get their checks, that will be deposited, and then we'll get the FEMA money once we've turned in the bill for the overall purchase.
And then the only other question, you said our costs will be about 20 grand. So I know it's drifting ahead a little bit, but the next item's asking for us to spend 99,000. Is that something different than what we're talking about on this grant?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I knew, I noticed it was the same company, it was a bunch of SCBA equipment. I'm like, okay, I was confused.
Yes.
So we're talking two different?
Two different, two different purchases, yes.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, it was the pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the purchase of the SCBA equipment for the fire department, contract to McQueen Equipment in the amount of $1,527,428. Reimbursed 90% from FEMA regional grant.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the purchase of SCBA equipment for fire department, contract to McQueen Equipment in the amount of $1,527,428. Reimbursed 90% from FEMA regional grant.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the purchase of SCBA equipment for fire department, contract to McQueen Equipment in the amount of $1,527,428. Reimbursed 90% from FEMA regional grant. Are there any other questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Christie. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. So the second item here is for rescue equipment for our department. This is something that has been in our budget for the past couple of years. We were writing grants again through FEMA, hoping to get one through them. We came close, but for some reason, they overlooked us, and so this money has been in my budget since, I think, '21, '22. And so we've been waiting to spend it, hoping that we would get the grant and only have to pay 10% of it, but because we never got the grant, it's time to spend the money. So this is rescue equipment for our departments that we will use, that will help equip our trucks to be able to handle just about any type of rescue that we already do. Some of our equipment has been old and outdated, so you have airbags, and you have shocks and struts, some SCBA bottles are on this as well. So this is all rescue equipment that we will use for our department. This is to McQueen Equipment as well, for the price of $99,524.65.
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I noticed the slew.
There's a ton of stuff.
Of equipment. My question to you is that the only thing I didn't see was any kind of labor listed for these items to be placed, let's say, struts and such, on the vehicles, or would that come later?
So when I say struts, that's a piece of equipment that we use to stabilize a vehicle that is rolled over. So that's, there's no labor involved in any of this, other than my guys placing them on the truck, figuring out where in the truck we're going to, we're going to store them and secure them. So there is no labor for that at all.
Any of the equipment that was listed?
Nope.
Oh.
Nope, this is all, this is all just equipment. When I say, again, struts and shocks and struts, those are items that we use to stabilize vehicles that either rolled over or down a hill or, you know, on their side.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? Other questions from the board? Hearing none, it was the pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the purchase of rescue equipment for the fire department, giving contract to McQueen Equipment in the amount of $99,524.65. Funds to be paid from the 402 capital plan budget.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to purchase of a rescue equipment for fire department, contract to McQueen Equipment in the amount of $99,524.65. Funds to come from the 402 capital plan budget. Any other questions? Roll call vote. Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray? Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Interim Chief Byrne.
Good evening, Honorable Board. First course of business here is that if you recall, the police department was given the opportunity to replace the chiller on top which was one of the original ones built in the early 90s. So at the beginning of this year, we did a request for proposals, where you got six vendors that submitted a bid, and tonight I'm asking for the request to accept a proposal from Guardian Environmental Services, and they came with the lowest bid of $142,968. And not only has Guardian bid the lowest bid, they've also installed the original equipment in the police department, they have good historical knowledge, and we've had a good working relationship with them. This money would come paid for from the 402 Capital Improvement Fund.
Chief, did he tell you the timing about how long, when this gets approved?
It's potentially because of supply demands, it may not be till the fall, but it just depends on when they get the supplies in.
Questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Hearing none, it was the pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the bid award to Guardian Environmental Services, GES, for Police Department Chiller Number One, in the amount of $142,968. Funds from the...
402.
402.
I saw that.
Yeah, 402 Capital Improvement Fund.
Supported by Trustee King. Any discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to award the bid to Guardian Environmental Services, GES, for the Police Department Chiller One, for $142,968. Funds to come from the 402 Capital Improvement Fund. Roll call vote for Christie. Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray? Yes, motion passes.
Okay, for my second order of business, if you recall, the last meeting that we had, the board approved our purchase of the integrated dispatch consoles through Motorola, which I believe was the MTC 75000E. With that, we need to get an agreement with the Michigan Public Safety Communication System. We currently have an agreement in place with our current system. With the new system that we're going to purchase, we would also need to get into a new agreement with that company so we could do that. So I'm asking the board if they would approve that membership subscriber agreement with the MPSCS and provide a resolution authorizing Supervisor McCray as a person authorized to sign the agreement.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Chief, in needing a new agreement, is it strictly because of the brand new equipment?
That is correct. It's the updated equipment and new features on there, so that's why we need a new agreement as opposed to what we already have in place.
Do they just verify that the new equipment is compatible with their system, or is there...
Yes, so this will be more of a hand-in-hand thing with Motorola, as we have the project manager, like we discussed from last, it will be implemented eventually in spring of '25, but through the process Motorola would help us with the integration and speaking with the MPSCS.
And did they charge for this agreement?
Not to my knowledge, they do not.
So there's no cost, just updating the agreement to match the equipment that we're going to have?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
And just to confirm, nothing else changed in the agreement except the new equipment?
That's correct. You'll see, there's a couple things in the agreement. If you put them side by side, we have some newer features, that is just included in the new user agreement.
Okay, and how often is the renewal?
At any time we upgrade the system. Like the one we have now was around 2000 when we implemented it, and that's when the original integrated dispatch consoles were put in there. So now that we're basically not gunning up, but we're improving it so much more and so much more bells and whistles, that needs to be put on a new user agreement.
But there's no renew until you put something else in place, is that what it is?
Correct. With the system we have now, we're covered under the user agreement that we've already have in place. But this is just to get the process through as we go through updating our dispatch consoles.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, it was the pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the Police Department MPSCS integration agreement and naming Supervisor McCray as an authorized signer for the agreement.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to approve the membership subscription agreement with MPSCS and approve the resolution authorizing Supervisor McCray as a person authorized to sign the agreement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray? Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the appointment of Alan Reichenbach?
Reichenbach.
Reichenbach? Okay. I heard that in my memory, Reichenbach, right? To the Police and Fire Pension. I'm not sure if we're supposed to be approving this here because if the police department gets to pick their person, so I guess what they're asking for is just to say, we approve with your pick, is all I can figure.
To the Chair?
Unless you...
To the Chair?
No, no, no.
Well...
Okay, first the chief.
First the chief, okay, fine.
First the chief, and then you get to talk, and I'll be quiet.
So I can speak to this because I actually have a place on the board, but due to my impending retirement, resignation will be tendered at the end of this month, so Officer Reichenbach will be taking my position. He's been almost the past years going through the meetings, and he has improvement through the POAM, the COAM. They're on file with the pension board, so it would just be to approve his appointment as the police representative trustee.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
That's all I was going to say.
Well, you can say it. You could probably say it more eloquently.
Mr. Reichenbach has been attending the meetings and along with the chief, I mean, interim chief, and he's been getting up to speed and seems like a good fit, so that's all.
Any questions from the board? Treasurer Kavanaugh, you want to make that motion?
Yes. I move to approve the appointment of Alan Reichenbach to the Police and Fire Pension Board, previously approved by POAM, COAM unions.
Support.
Today's supported by Trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to approve the appointment of Mr. Alan Reichenbach to the Police Fire Civil Service, and he was approved by the POAM, COAM. Right, is it? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion passes. Mr. Bonner. I believe it's your turn now.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Supervisor, before you. This evening, Honorable Board, is the Fiscal Year 2025 General Appropriations Act. The form of this act is set by the State of Michigan in the Uniform Budgeting Act. It establishes the chief administrative officer for the budget, being the township supervisor, the chief fiscal officer, being myself, that there must be a public hearing on the budget, which was held this evening, and that the proposed millage levy and the estimated revenues and appropriations and the payment of bills is all adopted by reference, which includes the attachments, which are part of this, which is the document that has the tax levy and the actual budget book. So that is all, together with the resolution, makes up the General Appropriations Act. There have been no changes to the proposed budget from what was presented to you in early February, other than the changes discussed at the special meeting on February 13th and at the special meeting two weeks ago, whatever that date was. Those are the only changes.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the Fiscal Year 2025 General Appropriations Act.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Jackson. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
I'm voting yes on this budget with an explanation that I continue to believe that we should fill the superintendent's position.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray? Yes, motion carries. Next, we have the Spectrum, who is taking the Spectrum?
I am.
Okay, then go ahead, I'm sorry, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. In your packet is the service agreement, but I think for some reason my memo was not included in the packet, so I will just summarize that briefly. It was a really short memo, like I did a good job of being short and sweet.
So our service agreement with Spectrum was expired at this point with the exception of the new North End Fire Station that was still under a term. The proposal is to renew for a three-year term at $4,649 a month, plus taxes and fees. This utility bill is paid for through the township's IT department, and then we charge it back to the other departments through the annual cost allocation report. So every department pays for their share of the usage of this townshipwide. After reviewing our usage and other factors with both Spectrum and VC3, I am recommending that we increase the speed and bandwidth at some of our sites. Fortunately, because the cost of the infrastructure upgrades made in the past by Spectrum has been mostly paid for already at this point, even though it has been four years since we last signed an agreement with them, and we are upping our speeds, the actual contract only went up by 5%, which in four years is pretty good. So I'm requesting that the Board approve the service agreement renewal of Spectrum for a three-year term and authorize me to sign the service agreement.
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Now, my question.
Oh, boy.
Not sure how to present it. Okay. Well, I wanted to find out, I wanted to know if the speeds coming in are actually hitting us as they should. Because I know that there was a problem early on that we were supposed to be getting 100, I believe, and there was only, I think, monitoring with five. And that bottlenecked a lot of our productivity. Has that been happening, or has that gotten better? And who's actually monitoring that?
So that's part of what's being fixed with the speed adjustments. So what was happening is that you have two different things that are going on. You have the speed that's coming into what they call the head, which is here at Town Hall, and the speed that was being delivered to Town Hall was one gig. Then you have the speed that's in the fiber ring, which is what's connecting all of our buildings together. That was at some locations only at 100 megabytes. So you have a gig coming in, and then you're trying to send it out somewhere that's capped at 100, and that's where we were getting bottlenecks. So all of those have been raised. And we looked at the usage, the bandwidth peaks that were going on in the various buildings to make sure that what we're raising it to is sufficient to meet the demand. So we should see that be fixed.
Okay, knock on wood.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Board? What's the pleasure of the Board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the three-year service agreement renewal with Spectrum Enterprise. Whoops. With, what is it? The additional authorization from the?
To authorize Adam to?
Adam to.
To be the signer?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Right, let me write that part down.
Write down what you said.
Okay, so motion made. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. The motion is to approve a three-year service agreement with Spectrum Enterprise and to authorize Adam Bonner as the signer for the township. Vote, call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes? Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Bonner?
That brings us to the last item this evening, which is, as we end the fiscal year here, the Fiscal Year 2024 Final Budget Amendment, which was in your packet along with a memo. So things, for the most part, are finishing exactly as we expected, as directed by the Board. You know, we are using the surplus from last year that we did pay that one-time bonus to all of the employees in December. And we are making an additional $1.5 million contribution to the general employee OPEB fund, which, so we're putting that money right back towards our long-term liabilities. We also used part of last year's surplus to upgrade the camera systems around the township, which was around $200,000. So those three items together adds up to approximately $2.2 million. And right now, I'm projecting, that we're using from last year, right? And I'm projecting that we're going to finish just over 2 million. So we're still coming in ahead of where we thought we would be. And within this, I do just want to make sure, you know, I put in, if I saw any major changes on the line-by-line with the departments, I did put a note there regarding what that was related to. I do want to talk about a couple of them just briefly. The very first one on the revenue side, and this was good timing because I had literally just said to Chief Accountant Jaclyn Harper that I could not believe this day that we were not required to show on our books where the $2 million that we received from the state of Michigan for the Protecting Michigan Pension Plan grant, because that money went directly to the state of Michigan. And literally, on Thursday, they sent us a memo from State Treasury telling us what to do. If they had waited to send that next week, we would have been dinged on our audit for this.
Oh, wow.
Because we had received no direction on what to do with this, and we received the money all the way back in August. So that's why on the estimated revenues, you see on the very first line, we have that additional $2 million coming in for that grant. And then on the expense side, it goes right back out. We also did do that withdrawal, that transfer in from MMRA related to some of our insurance things earlier this year. And then we have big changes in the police and fire departments that was related to ARPA. If you remember, like what we did last year, we paid for public safety wages using ARPA dollars, and then the money we would have used from the general fund is what we moved to the set aside for the recreation center or for other capital projects. We're doing the same thing here. The big benefit related to this is that by doing so, the funds are no longer ARPA funds, they're township funds, which means they no longer have that December 31st of 2024 deadline to be used. So that is a big plus for us. It takes that pressure off of our back. In the fire department, you see a decrease, and that's all related to the grant that Chief Dymoff was talking about earlier. We had initially thought we might have received that this fiscal year, and instead, it's going to be next fiscal year. If you go to on the second page of the spreadsheet, about five lines down, the general government line, line 219, that has, if you notice, has a massive change, right? The original budget was 7.4 million, and now it's 15.2. And that's because that's where all of those excess contributions for the 1.5 million that we're putting towards OPEB, the 2 million from the state of Michigan, the 2 million from the Act 345 millage, all the ARPA money, it all goes there. So that's why that one has such a massive change in what's happening. On the elections line, that line changed because we have all the expenditures from the presidential primary, which we will be reimbursed for, but we don't, we obviously didn't get reimbursed by the end of March. So that'll come next year. That's why that budget changed. Other than that, I didn't think there was anything overly major to discuss. I just wanted to point out those couple of items. We should be in good shape. The audit is Jaclyn's favorite time of the year. I don't know what's wrong with her when she thinks that, but I'm glad she enjoys it. And she's laughing.
Okay, questions from the Board? Hearing no questions? What's the pleasure of the Board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the Fiscal Year 2024 Final Budget Amendment.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the 2024 Final Budget Amendment. Vote, call vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes? Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Adam. Thank you.
So announcements from the Board?
Okay, all I want to say is we have some opportunities if you're looking to get employment. We're looking for police officers, police dispatch, firefighters, entry-level and lateral, police cadets, school crossing guards, deer bus driver, full and part-time, chief mechanic, plumbing inspector, maintenance worker two, parks maintenance supervisor, seasonal marquee maintenance, and secretary four. So if you think you might meet any of those qualifications or sounds interesting to you, please go to our website or come into our HR department and apply for the jobs, because they're good jobs, they're good-paying jobs, and you'll be not only making money, but you'll be servicing your community. Anything else? Seeing no other business before the Board, this meeting is adjourned.